Any motivation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties on which I'm about to enter in the capacity of a member of the planning commission of the city of Eureka. Do you so affirm, Ms. Freitas?
I affirm.
Ms. Freitas, do you so affirm?
It is my honor to. Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Something happened with my video there. You guys can hear me okay, right? Okay, very good.
Can you guys hear me too? Can you hear my audio?
It was for me, it was.
Cutting out a little bit.
Yeah, it's cutting out. Okay, I will get this to City Hall later this evening. We have a drop box up front, City Hall.
No, could you bring it when you sign the resolutions?
Well, we have for something else. The approval of minutes, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I presume that the two commissioners that were there have had a chance to review us.
Is it really to move to approve the minutes?
Meredith moves. Tiana, you want a second?
I second.
Any proposed changes or are we ready to approve them as written?
Ready to approve.
All those in favor of approving them as written, give me a thumbs up. All right, anybody disapprove? Any objections? Excellent. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. And this is a section of the meeting, this section of the meeting provides commissioners and the public an opportunity to address the commission on any subject not appearing on the agenda. For some of the Brown Act, of course, we cannot act on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to share at this particular point? All right, well, I guess I do. That's the one. Oral communications, approximately a year ago, Meredith and Tiana, I'm not sure if y'all were there, I don't remember, but city staff presented the idea of building multifamily buildings over underutilized city-owned parking lots. Do y'all remember that? Were you there, Meredith and Tiana? All right, so you remember that meeting? The, you know, there's a lot of questions and thoughts and comments and stuff like that. But generally speaking, we all agree that it was a good idea and the city staff should move forward with some detailed plans and bring, you know, bring them back so that we can iron out the wrinkles and make sure that we had a good project. At our last meeting, Kristen told me that there was not going to be a vigorous public process. And that after the request proposal was issued last July and the three proposals were reviewed by an in-house group last fall at City Council on October 20th, after a one-hour, 18-minute discussion over Zoom during a pandemic, during contentious presidential election, decided to commit to the project. Over the last month, I've visited with several city council members, several staff members as well concerning the project. I'm gotten some huge grave concerns and first and foremost, frankly, I'm just appalled that the council and staff thinks this kind of process, this decision-making process is adequate. So been a member of the planning commission for 12 years now, been asking staffing on a regular basis. Everyone's heard me, Kristen's given me updates about how it's gone through the process. But to this day, we haven't had a public meeting where the entire city has come to look at the plans. And I just, I think that's just not acceptable. I only actually found the plans for the proposed buildings online and the news media. There was one article written before the city council met and decided to pursue it. And that article was published the day of the meeting. So when I compare that to the effort that the city made to engage the public about our recent general plan update, I just, the effort of public engagement on this project, it was just pathetic. I don't, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but these are three buildings, each one larger than City Hall. They will live there for 50 years. If we make a mistake on the general plan, we go in and put some strokes on a keyboard. If we have design flaws in these big projects, we're going to live with the consequences, be it monetary in the form of tearing down or be it three and potentially six or 10 or 12 huge buildings. So when I spoke to several members of the council personally, they affirmed that there has been ongoing public discussion about this project for several years. And they cited, they told me that there have been discussions like on the housing element, the general plan and all these other discussions that we participated in. But there's no way that we could have looked at the plans for these buildings because we didn't even have one at the time. And frankly, I feel like, you know, suggesting that discussions we've had in the past approves these three buildings, I think it's dishonest and I think it's fraudulent, certainly in the way it represents my personal votes and actions. I sell living, I sell real estate for a living. I work with clients every day. And if a client told me a year ago, the general type of home that they wanted, and I signed a contract on their behalf that they hadn't even had a chance to see the home or even discuss it with me, they would and should fire me. That's not appropriate representation. That's tyranny. So it has been my distinct pleasure and joy, and I mean this seriously, it's been a pleasure and a joy to serve the city. Over the last 12 years, over 12 years I've been on the planning commission, I've learned a ton. I have sincerely enjoyed working with city staff and with other commissioners. And I've really enjoyed working with the private members of our city. I mean, how many people come to our meetings and are scared to death? And yet they're able to get up there and share their fears and their dreams. And it's been a joy. There's a lot of wisdom in our city. There's 30,000 people that live in our city limits. There's another, there's tens of thousands that live right outside the city limits or travel here every day to work, run their businesses and stuff. There's a ton of wisdom in that group. And I can't in good conscience participate in a government that claims to represent those people and then sidelines them with minimized processes and minimal efforts at public outreach. So I believe city government should serve the people we represent by listening to them and giving them what they want, not by dictating to them what we think they need. So gratitude and gratefulness for the good work that we've accomplished before and with grave concerns and disappointment for the project and processes before us now. I resign from City Eureka's Planning Commission effective immediately. Hate to throw that on you, Tiana. You're the vice chair, but I pass the gavel to you. I wish you the best as you move forward. I have enjoyed every minute of it. Well, every minute of it about the last month. Good night. Thanks.
Well, that was a dramatic turn of events that I don't think any of us were expecting. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a real shame. Jeff's a smart guy. He's been a stand-up member of this commission.
He has been a stand-up member of this commission and, you know, pivotal in a lot of decisions made here for the city of Eureka. So I'm sorry to see him go.
How does that affect our quorum tonight?
We still have three members present, so we still have a forum.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me? Am I able to say something really quickly?
Yes.
So I remember working with Jeff Reagan and I always really appreciated how he would start the meetings and welcome everybody in and try and make every person feel at home and feel like what they had to say was important. And he always say, this is like our community living room and we're all just here to learn together and talk about these issues. And I really appreciated his style. That being said, I also really appreciate how staff has seen through the housing projects that he expressed concerns about. I think that everything they've done has been by the books and very transparent. And I appreciate the effort they put into this.
Well, thank you for that. I think that, you know, perspective is a good thing, no matter how you're looking at it, you know, and that it's great that we have, I wanted to welcome you to the commission, by the way. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
So, yeah, you know, crazy things can happen, but yeah, I'm sad to see him go. I'm excited though to continue the commission with the three of you and tonight and with our other commissioners, you know, moving forward. So as far as tonight, you guys are gonna have to bear with me, I have a scratch in my eyes. So reading is a little bit hard, especially on the planning commission minutes and the agenda for tonight. So you might have to hold my hand a little bit through it because my eyes are hurting. So just fair warning on that. So moving forward, I know that there, is that okay if we move forward, staff? Anyone else have anything else?
Whenever you're ready.
We need to close oral communications before you move on.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Has anyone out there that wants to say anything or speak?
It looks like one of our participants would like a link to the live stream for their commenters that will comment later.
Campbell, thank you.
Thank you.
You're not here for the oral communications right now, correct?
He is not.
Okay.
He'll be speaking on a project later on.
All right, well, if no one else has anything to say and no one else is here for oral communications, let's go ahead and close oral communications. Okay, so moving on, and if you guys can help me with this, moving into the public hearings, new public hearings.
So, Madam Vice Chair, we have one new public hearing for DAP or DAT props vacation rental. It's at 3405 Dolbear Street, parcel number 01320.
I'm very sorry. We have eight people that are speaking and they cannot see or hear what's going on. So can you please share the link somebody with us so I can share that with everybody so they can jump on to participate? I know that they can only speak when they're called, but I still, I don't have the link yet. I apologize for interrupting.
So the link is in the chat?
The link is in, yeah, I put the link in the chat.
Okay, I don't see it. I'm in the everyone chat.
Hold on, hold on. I bet I've got a better way. Let's try this. Because you are not in the, there we go.
There we go, okay.
You weren't in the waiting room anymore, so I put it in the wrong place.
Okay, thank you.
So Madam Vice Chair, again, 3405 Dolbear Street, parcel number 0132016, project number MUP-21-0001. And Caitlin is going to give us our staff presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, let me show my screen. Okay. Let's get started. Okay, thank you commissioners. Tonight I present to you for your consideration, the DAT props vacation rental minor use permit. Here's a bird's eye view of the site and where it's located in the context of the city limits, excuse me. And here we are zooming in. It's located, as Kristen said, at 3405 Dolbear Street. It's just north of the county Cotten Community. It is right on the border of the city of Eureka Limits, south of Harris Street. Here we are zooming in further. The star is the site location. It is across the street from Washington Elementary. Sequoia Park is nearby, as well as the National Guard Armory. Here we are going in even closer. You can see it's a single-family detached home, detached garage. It has a, it shares an access driveway with the neighbor to the north and the neighbor to the east. And these are off-street, available off-street parking spaces. So per city code, a minor use permit is needed for a vacation rental with no proprietor on-site in the R1, which is residential low zoning district. The site is comprised of an existing one-story, four-bedroom, two-bath, 1,750-square-foot, single-family residence with a detached garage and covered carport on a 7,500-square-foot lot. The director approved this minor use permit on February 25th, 2021, which allowed for a total of 10 guests, not including children under 12, and which is consistent with the requirements of the vacation rental regulations. And that allows two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons. So with four bedrooms, that's eight plus two is 10. There isn't a designated emergency contact that is located approximately 5.3 miles from the vacation rental, which is less than the 50-mile minimum requirement in the city code. The garage and the carport were not included in the vacation rental minor use permit. Per the applicant, three compact or two large vehicle parking spaces were available that you saw on the previous screen between the residents and the detached garage. Also, per the applicant's house rules, no events, no noise after 10:00 PM and no more than one visitor per vacation rental guest at one time. So for example, if there were four guests, there could be four visitors for a total of eight people. So here's a photo that I took from across the street in the parking lot of the school. The yellow arrow is pointing to the detached garage, as well as those off-street parking spaces. And you can see the access driveway that's shared with the neighbors. So after the MUP was approved by the director with conditions on February 25th, a notice of action was subsequently mailed to all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the proposed use. And then on March 9th, a request to hold a public hearing was received with the following concerns, which have been addressed in the staff report. However, I will briefly address them now. And the list does not include written concerns received after the public hearing notice was mailed and this staff report was published to the city's website. The first concern was congested parking. And city code does not require new or to have on-street parking to utilize the existing residences of vacation rental. Another concern was no fencing between the subject property and adjoining properties along the drive. So the site is, the site and the adjacent properties to the north and east, as I said, share an access driveway, which appears to not provide adequate space to install a fence, which could increase privacy. Also, there is mature vegetation in their backyard, which provides a screen between the adjoining lots to the east and the south. There was issues with previous renters. The city has no way of regulating who the vacation rental gets rented to and a lack of, lack of garbage service, which has been addressed through an additional condition of approval. So the, excuse me, let me go back. So the purpose of the planning commission public hearing tonight is to review and either uphold or overturn the director's decision to approve the minor use permit. However, on March 10th, the applicant did contact myself, staff, and requested modifications via email to the approved MUP. After various emails back and forth, the modifications are to allow events and remove voluntary, their voluntary house rule of one visitor per guest, as well as utilize the garage as a game room. In the interest of moving this permit forward for the applicant, the requested modifications have been added and the planning commission can decide whether or not to approve the modifications. Additional analysis is provided for the requested modifications and to address neighbor concerns received as a result of the notice of action mailing. And additional recommendation, recommended conditions of approval have been added to the resolution in attachment one, which I'll discuss on the next slide. So the original conditions of approval were to inspect, the residents must be inspected by the building department prior to operating and the applicant will need to obtain any necessary building permits and follow-up inspections required by the initial inspection. They will need to pay the transit occupancy tax, the maximum number of occupants is 10. And also the self-imposed house rules were not included as conditions of approval because those were expected to follow them themselves. So the new conditions of approval, so the applicant is now proposing to allow events, which is permissible in city code for vacation rentals. We did work with the building official to determine what the total occupant limit for events would be based on the building code, and that was 16 persons, which does include the rental guests. Guests. Additionally, events must not create a noise nuisance in violation of city code section 94.02, titled loud noises unlawful. And per the applicant, there are outdoor security cameras, which will allow their staff to remotely monitor the site to mitigate any potential issues related to events. As a result, staff recommends approval of the modifications with the condition that they do not exceed the six events annually, which is already required, and no more than 16 persons can attend the events. Additionally, the existing garage is not included in the vacation rental. However, now the applicant would like to use, add the garage to the minor use permit so it could be used as a game room to put such as a recreational pool table or dartboard. So it could be used by their guests. They have indicated that the garage will only be accessible between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, which will be controlled by an automatic door lock, which will allow guests to leave, but they will not be able to enter again after 9:00 PM as the door will be locked from the outside. The applicant and/or their staff will remotely monitor the interior of the garage through video and audio surveillance to enforce their house rules. And, you know, they, they're going to do their best to strictly enforce it with notices. Lastly, due to the concerns that we, that were received about an incident where trash was left outside the door and was subsequently scattered into the neighboring property, staff recommends the project be conditioned to ensure trash and recycling is located in a secure bin or kept indoors and removed promptly by their employees either weekly or after each guest check-in. So briefly, I'm going to go over there, our enforcement of vacation round standards. So the department will provide the applicant's emergency contact information to all neighboring properties within 200 feet of the vacation rental and to the Eureka Police Department. And should the city either receive two or more notifications showing negligent, negligent responding to an emergency situation in a rolling 12-month period or two documented law enforcement violations in a 12-month rolling period or the vacation rental is chronically non-compliant with the requirements of the vacation rental regulations in the city code or they fail to pay their occupancy taxes or they fail to correct the building or fire code violations, their permit could be revoked pursuant to city code enforcement. So the, the proposed use doesn't comply with the objectives and purposes of the general plan zoning code and the R1 zoning district development standards. And additional findings required by city code to approve the modified no proprietor on-site vacation rental minor use permit are discussed in the staff report. Here is a recommended motion, and this concludes my presentation. And I am available for questions, as well as the applicant David Adams. And then I believe the other gentleman was the property owner who's here. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Before we obviously open a public comment and hear from anyone else, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff regarding this report?
I have a quick question. That was a very good staff report. It answered some of the questions that I had. But I'm curious to know, do we have the ability to alter the relocation process? Or is it just how it's set by the code and?
Hi, this is Kristen.
Hi.
Hi. So I'm going to put you on hold. It might be a few.
I'm sorry. Yeah, keep going. Sorry.
Yeah, so that was my question is, do we have the ability to alter the, the relocation process or not?
So your question was to alter the, the enforcement process that I just read out. If you did, it would, you would need a text amendment, I believe, to the zoning code.
Okay. So that wouldn't really be like a condition of approval. That would be a much more challenging process. So that really wouldn't be the best way to approach conditioning this project.
Yeah, but you, as a commission, can, you can recommend, you can, you guys could vote on a new condition of approval or you could take some away, just from staff analysis. That is what we put on there to try to address the concerns. But by all means, you could recommend something, I think.
Thank you.
To be clear, when it says the 16 persons, it, then it excludes children under 12. So then you could have four kids per adult if, so that could increase the noise and the occupancy substantially. And that's written in the, in our code, in the city's code?
Yes. So children under 12 are not included in the occupancy count, but they do have to follow the noises unlawful code. So if they were to be loud and obnoxious, especially after 10:00 PM, they just need to submit a complaint and then that could be an additional notification as part of those 12, you know, rolling months.
Okay. And then just, just to be clear on the zoning in that area, that's residential zoning, correct?
Correct. It's single-family residential low zoning.
I drove by that house today to take a look at it. And I was curious, I appreciated that you took that picture because I really wanted to pull in almost to those spots to see if they could, you could get by. And it seems like even with a larger truck, there's certainly room in that driveway, which seemed to be an issue with some of the neighbors. So thanks for including that picture because it more accurately just depicted what could park there effectively and off the street. And there is a little bit of a street issue parking, simply because I think the schools across the street and I think there's a lot of red curbs there.
Anything else for staff commissioners? Okay, well then, let's go ahead and open public hearing on this.
Madam Vice Chair, did you want to offer the applicants an opportunity to speak first?
Oh, definitely. Please.
Mr. Johnson or Mr. Adams, did you have comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, we have a little bit we'd like to discuss. David, are you here too? David?
Looks like he's muted.
Yes, I am now. Great. So David and I are partners in life. And we recently launched a vacation rental up in Crescent City. It's doing very well in terms of serving, serving travelers and also making neighbors happy. We haven't had any complaints. There is a picture that we'd like to share of the inside of the vacation rental. Caitlin, do you have that screen sharing ability or who, who has the pictures that we sent earlier?
Kristen does.
I don't have individual pictures. It's just the big screenshot of all of the photos.
The email.
I didn't get any presentation pictures.
Okay, yeah, if you're able to, I guess, share that, that'd be great. And so this is how we monitor our properties. We have audio and visual. We have somebody named Neil who will be coming on later to talk. He's one of our employees. He's full-time. He helps monitor audiovisual. And if you could please scroll down on that. This is a picture of the front of the house. As you can see, it's well-maintained. We have a professional landscaper. His name is, his name is Ron Beck. His wife Gloria may be calling in if she's able to speak later. And right now, she does professionally clean the house already. And Ron's been on staff as a landscaper for about a year and a half. As you can see, we got nice little, nice little, what do you call that? The, babe, do you know what that's called? The little trees, the shrubs, boxwoods? Nice little boxwood ball, cherry, cherry trees. And let's see. And moving on. So we understand that some neighbors have some complaints. We'd like to address a few of those complaints that came up. We are currently renting out rooms in our house. And with that, there's always, you know, with tenants, there's always problems that come. The things that were mentioned in the, in the letter, a lot of them are true. The key thing is, the issues were dealt with. The three people that were mentioned, they're, they're all given their 30-day notice and they all moved out. So when we have a problem, we address it. We, we do our best to manage things professionally. And when, when we know about a problem, we like to share, share that information. And if you could please scroll down to the, to the next slide, there's another picture of the inside. Or this is a picture of the inside of the Crescent City unit that we manage. This just shows, I think, that we're going for professional, professional look and that we manage it properly and we keep it clean. And here's a picture below of the outside of the unit. This is a picture of the backyard. And here's a picture below of the outside of the unit. This is a picture of the backyard. We have a gazebo. This yard is a bit larger than the one in Dolby, but we do intend to do what we can with the space. And that, I think that is it for the pictures that we. Oh, there's one more thing at the bottom. We also have a lock. This is another way that we remotely manage it with our staff. We have a lock. The smart locks that notifies us when the door is open, when the door is closing. And that's monitored not just by David, David, the property manager, that's also monitored by Neil. And we also have another staff member, Brian, that manages that. And if we see the door opening and closing too often, especially late at night, it'll help us know that there's a problem. And then we have to keep an extra eye on it. So we have a lot of technology, not just with audio video, but with the smart locks. They help us keep an eye on the property. And I'll tell you that if we do get any any complaints, we haven't had any complaints in Crescent City. But I'll tell you, if we do get a noise complaint here, they also make noise alert systems that we could engage. So that we would know without even actively monitor, we could passively monitor it and then know know if there's any sort of noise concern going on. And going back to, I think we're done with the pictures. Thanks for doing the screen share there. And I would like to address the concern about the garbage service. The the garbage service, ironically, we did have a garbage bag sitting in the backyard. Ironically, this is kind of comical. The bag was opened by a wandering dog from a neighbor. And I don't want to name any names, just kind of ironic that a complaint that was made was actually contributed. From, you know, happened partially from from a neighbor. And we are, David, do you want to take it over? I think I'm about halfway through.
I have to go grab something outside real quick.
We had a delivery, sorry.
Yeah.
On a place, okay. So I'll try to wrap it up here. So I'd like to speak, I don't, I'm not sure if any neighbors are listening right now or planning to call in. But I'd like to speak about the concept of vacation rental. So if we have a long term tenant in there, if there's a problem with a long term tenant. It's a lot harder to deal with that issue than it is with a short term rental. With short term rentals, there's accountability. There is review system on V R B O. There's a review system on Airbnb. There's accountability. Not just with the host, but there's an accountability with the guests. If there are problems, then they're less likely to get rented to. And we also can screen applicants and check their reviews before we book them. And anytime that there's a large booking, we automatically do that. And anytime that there's a long term booking, we automatically do that. We automatically review. And if they've had any negative complaints, we also automatically review their reviews to to determine whether or not we we allow the booking. So with short terms, there are benefits to short term. One being they're there for a short period of time. If they're a headache, then they may be a headache for they'll they'll be a headache for a short period of time. Because they they come and they go. And there are some systems Airbnb has in place too, that I'd like everybody to know that might be watching. If somebody's under the age of twenty five, Airbnb does not allow somebody under the age of twenty five to book the unit for a single day. They have, they need somebody over the age of twenty five to book the unit for a single day. This is done to prevent large unruly gatherings, which we will definitely have as many things in place. To prevent those from happening. And just to, I'd like to mention this as a kind of a final, final two little tie ins. So we're not, we're not here with our neighbors to. We're not here with our neighbors to complain about certain things such as people living in sheds. We're not here to complain about wandering dogs. We're not here to complain about chickens wandering the yard. We're not here to complain about stinky fish. That that just comes with being neighbors. Everything that a neighbor does, you don't like every single thing that your neighbor does. At the end of the day, we have to coexist. And I assure everybody listening that we're going to have the best communication we possibly can. We're a phone call away. And we're still your neighbors. We plan to come back to this house. We plan to visit it, especially in June. When the weather is perfect and favorable. So you're still our neighbors. We we intend to still be a neighbor and we intend to do everything we can to manage this proper, manage this properly. Like we manage the other unit that we have in in Crescent City. And David, are you back yet? No, so I'm going to wrap up here. In conclusion, this is an opportunity not just for residents who might need short term housing in Eureka. And do not feel comfortable at the local motel or hotel. This is not just an opportunity for people coming to Eureka and bringing priceless tourism dollars to our community. This is not just an opportunity for Sam, Neil, Brian, Gloria, Ron, Ty, Thomas and Frank. Those are all our employees that we have on staff. They all have job opportunities because of what we do with real estate. David and I believe that the best form of charity is to give somebody a job. It gives people purpose and it feeds their family. The project will help us continue on with that mission. This is the most important, this is the most, this is most importantly, an opportunity for us. There is less and less small business opportunity in this world. Big business and hedge fund companies are eating up, merging and dissolving small business. Small business still exists in Eureka. This is something we like about Eureka. We don't love Pearson's. It's not our favorite, but we like it. We love a lot of other small businesses in town. We look forward to sending our ten percent occupancy tax over. And we look forward to the added tourism dollars that this will bring into Safeway, Fresh Freeze, China Walks, Buffet, the Zip Lines, H S U, Fern Canyon. And Ferndale. And with that, I think we have a few people calling in and thank you for the time. And we want to thank you for the amount of time. Caitlin, I know that you put a lot of time into the staff report. Thank you for working with us. And we want to, yeah, we want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your words and your communication tonight. We appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? I I don't either. So thank you very much. And oh, yeah, let's open up a public comment, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Our first speaker this evening is Kristen. Go ahead, Kristen, you're you have three minutes. So we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No.
What's going on?
I can hear you when you're speaking now, but if you were just speaking before, we couldn't hear you. Sorry, no, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, dear. Philip, first of all, I want to say regardless of the complaints you're not making about me. You know that we adored you and David. This is not personal to you two. We loved you.
Love you too.
Oh, this was before. Is that a delay?
Yeah, there's a delay if you're listening to it on your computer.
Okay, let me mute this. I'm sorry. Let me mute it because I'm hearing the feedback. So Philip and David know that we loved them. The biggest problem we have with this issue really is not something that's going to be addressed easily. If you look at the picture again to see the detached garage on their property, it is actually only about three, four feet from their property line. There is no way for people to pull in, pull out with it, out encroaching on each other's property. If we were to put a fence right down the property line, which we have looked into, we certainly have a right to do it. We're really going to shoot everybody in the foot. But Philip knows better than anybody. There is no privacy. If somebody's in the garage out in the back, we walk out the back door, everybody's just, it's like this big communal area right there. There is no way to be out of everybody's business. Our windows are all open to each other. And if you're looking at sixteen people on events six times out of the year, I can't set my purse on my table. I can't, you know, have my back door open. I'm going to have all these people who have a right to just be walking back and forth by my windows and by my doors. I I love these boys and I wish them the best, but this was not the house to expect people to just walk up and down the driveway. And not think that it would affect the people you share the drive with. If we were to put up a six or eight foot fence, I would feel much more secure. I would feel like I had much more privacy. But like I said, that is going to be very detrimental to both of our properties and to the home in the back. There is another, we have a dead end drive at the end of the road. We have twenty five feet between our houses, one driveway. And it's just, I have lost every bit of my sense of security and safety and stability. We have homeless people walking by here. We have, how do I know who's walking down my driveway if they're supposed to be here, if they're not supposed to be here? It's just as a person who's getting older and in my little tiny house, I absolutely do not feel safe with the comings and goings of strangers. There's, and I don't see a simple fix for that. And I don't wish the boys bad. I just don't know how. You know, they want a game room in the garage. That is, I can't have my back door open if they're out there. It's, I have my chickens. I have a backyard. The chickens are fully contained because I'm, you know, they've got to be. I just, this is right there bordering on a on a frightening situation for us. David is not here anymore. Philip's not here anymore. They were the ones we trusted. We don't know any of these other people.
You have thirty seconds left.
Pardon me?
You have thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds left. So I guess that's really, is I wish any of you would just go back and look at that picture of the driveway. Think about where my windows are, where my door is, and think about how you would feel if this vacation property was next door to you. It's absolutely taken away. I understand he has so many rights as a property owner, but I have rights as a property owner as well. And it's not easy for me to move this property. My husband's family has been on this property for over a hundred years. And if we had known this was Philip's intention, we would have never okayed the sale to him.
And your time is up.
Because of fear of this.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Staff, do we have anybody else who's calling in? Okay.
Sorry, trying to manage manage two mutes here. We do, and it'll take me just a moment to get them on the phone for us.
No problem. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Is Samantha James available?
Yes, this is her.
Hi Samantha, this is Kristen from City of Eureka, calling about thirty four zero five Dolby Street. Are you ready to provide your comments?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you'll have three minutes to provide your comments and I'll kind of try and interrupt you and let you know when you have about thirty seconds left. And then I'll let you know when you.
Do you have to talk for the whole three minutes?
You do not. If you only take fifteen seconds, that works too. All right, and I'll go ahead and announce you and I'll say you have three minutes and then you can start speaking. Okay. So I have Samantha James and she has three minutes.
All right. Hi, my name is Samantha. I work for Philip and David. And I really enjoy working for them. They provide a really safe working environment. As well as I would feel a very safe staying environment for vacation vacationers. Or, you know, people in town looking to get away for a little while. We always have anything that we need, cleaning supply wise or everything in the house. You know, there's anything anybody could possibly need. When I do clean, we're in constant communication. And they're always very quick to get back and to fix any issues that come up with the property. And the other workers that I have met, the landscaper, super nice. And there's, I mean, there's nothing to be afraid of, I feel like. There's so many cameras. If there's an issue, somebody's going to know right away. I just wanted to say that I really enjoy working for this company and I hope that I can continue and they can continue to expand.
Thank you, Samantha James, for your comment. We appreciate it. Thanks for speaking.
Thank you.
And if you stand by a moment, I'll get the next person on the line for us.
Thank you, Kristen.
Okay, so. Go ahead, Rick.
I'm on now.
You are?
Okay, well, hello, everybody. My name is Rick Johnson. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Philip. And I have visited Eureka and stayed at that house. And I understand the neighbors' concerns because of the orientation of the two properties. But in looking at Airbnbs, specifically, my wife and I are actually users of Airbnbs on a regular basis. And we're always pleased by how much effort is typically put into keeping up the property by the owners of these properties. They they tend to be in better shape than the houses nearby. And we feel that using a service like V R B O or Airbnb, that we're also somewhat under surveillance to be good guests of the property as well. So I I don't think the concern is really going to be a problem. Secondly, Philip is extraordinarily technologically advanced, as you could tell from his presentation. And I I think he's going to be a very good monitor and supervisor of that property and of the guests that are coming to it. He's also going to be presenting a wonderful face of Eureka by offering this property for people outside of the area. And having visited there, I fell in love with it myself. It's a beautiful place. And I think Philip will keep very good control of the people who will be his guests. And they know that David is also an excellent handyman and and developer of property. He's got a great hand at that, a great eye for it, and is very committed to making sure that the property not only maintains its appearance, but even is improved over time. I'd love to see their business boost admissions to Sequoia Park Forest and Gardens to make sure that that new ticket booth at the zoo gets a lot of business coming in. And and adds to the over nine hundred already existing vacation rentals in Humboldt County. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Really, we'll get our next speaker on the line for us.
Okay, go ahead, Thomas.
Hello, my name is Thomas, I have worked for David and Philip since August. I started working for them in the Crescent City House. I helped out with deconstruction, and at the time of starting, I didn't really know too much. And with the help of David and Frank, they taught me quite a bit, and you know, and I got to make some good money doing it, enough to, you know, buy my, my own car and finally move out. And now, me and my girlfriend are currently staying at the house on Dolby. I am, of course, assisting working on it. But we are staying long-term, and I've had a chance to get to know a lot of the guests coming in and out. And as far as I've seen, most of them are pretty nice. I, I haven't had any problems with noise or any extravagant people. Everyone kind of keeps to themselves, and is gone most of the time during the day. All in all, I believe, you know, me being here, I keep a, a pretty good eye on things, management-wise. Um, and if David or Philip ever need me to uh, to do something around here, they can just call me and let me know, you know, what needs to be done. And they can count on me to do it.
Okay. Was that it Thomas?
Oh yeah, that'll be it.
Okay. Thank you Thomas for your comment.
Raylene will get our next speaker, who's going to be Frank McCall.
Thank you Steph.
Go ahead Frank.
Hello, um, alright. Uh, I'm Frank McCall, I had the opportunity to work for Philip and David for approximately ten months. They are really great employers, they gave me the opportunity to uh, to work overtime as, as much as I wanted to, and I also had enough, but they gave very uh, competitive pay, I was able to buy a, a sub-vehicle myself, and uh, I'm a single father right now. I'm in the middle of a custody battle, and they're, they're working with me a lot with my sporadic schedule. I can say that as far as they're, them as people, they, they've, they're just uh, good folks, and they've got good heads on their shoulders, man. They don't know, uh, I, as far as uh, characters, I know that they make good decisions, and uh, I doubt that they'll allow any, anything shady going on at their properties. Sorry, I'm bad at public speaking, that's very much why I'm-
Well, thank you Frank McCall, you're not bad at public speaking, thanks for coming out here and letting your voice be heard, so, did a great job.
Thank you very much, so good day.
You too.
And Raylene is gonna get, I believe Gloria Mendonca on the phone.
Hi Gloria, this is Raylene, the City of Eureka Planning Department. Hi, are you ready to speak now? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker just a second please.
Okay.
And this is Gloria.
Hi.
Go ahead Gloria.
Oh, hi, I'm, I, I work for uh, Phil and David over there at Dolby, and they've employed me and my boyfriend for quite some time, at least six, six months or so for me, for housekeeping, and him for doing the lawn care at the place. And so I just wanted to support them because they, they gave us a job when there was no, there were no jobs out there yet.
Thanks Gloria.
Thank you Gloria, is that all you wanted to say?
Oh, um, I totally support these guys, they're, they're good, good kids, they're, they're trying to do something good for the community, and, and I, I've never noticed anything out of, you know, batteries, and it's always been nice and quiet there, and always trying to fix the place up. So, I just appreciate their work.
Awesome, well thank you Gloria for speaking out tonight, we appreciate it.
And I believe Raylene will get Ron Beck for us next.
Okay, so the number I have listed for Ron Beck is not able to be completed. So if you have something for me Philip, you can send it in the chat, and I'll try him, I'll go back to somebody else and we'll get back to it. Um, so next is gonna be Christina. Here you go. Go ahead Christina.
Hi, my name is Christina, and I have recently worked with Philip at, in the Crescent City House. And there, it's honestly like, it's a beautiful house, in my personal opinion, because you don't go anywhere and see any type of houses like that, and the cleaning, it's really good, because you know, we get the opportunity to learn new things. Like, I don't know if any of the other workers, like how, if they knew anything before this, but I, for myself, I see, I look at it as a learning opportunity, because this isn't something that I knew how to do, like with certain things. And so, hopefully, everything goes well, and everything is okay, and, you know. So, and I would like to thank them, and you know, hopefully everything is okay with the houses, and yeah.
Thank you for your comment tonight, we appreciate it.
And last on our list is gonna be Neil Espinoza.
Okay, go ahead Neil.
Yeah, um, hi, my name is Neil, and I'm Philip's co-host. And David, uh, well, they have provided me with opportu- a very huge opportunity for me. And we pay a very special attention to Anzio and check-in office with guests. Um, and we monitor the property security cameras and ensure no excessive noise. And so far, we have great reviews of the property. And most people love it. Uh, I'm able to provide for my pregnant wife, my child, and also my family for his, uh, great opportunity that he gave me. And they are, they are very patient, and also, um, they, I mean, especially David, I mean, especially Philip. Um, he is so strict with cleaning, and also with his policy, with no noise, and also with his rules. Well, I say that, um, they are great people, and also, uh, they are, um, uh, what do you call, uh, uh, they are great, uh, managers of, uh, properties like this. They're great, uh, hosts. Hello?
We're here Neil.
Thank you.
Thank you Neil.
Yeah. That's all.
Thank you Neil for speaking tonight, we appreciate the comments. Is that it Kristin, for our list of people who are on the line waiting to speak?
That's all the numbers that we had, um, we emailed tonight.
I, uh, I am back from the delivery outside. If I can get my three minutes, David Adams.
Steph, how does that work technically, um, since we opened up to the applicants first?
Mr. Adams is one of the applicants.
Alright, so then technically that's, that's allowed, right?
We can, if the commission wants to, they can allow it.
Um, I'm fine with it, commissioners?
Totally fine.
Fine.
Go ahead, good sir.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the, uh, little bit unorthodox, um, way of, uh, of me doing this, but um, thank you for the opportunity. As you've seen in the pictures from the examples, the Anzio property up in Crescent City, we are not here to do things half-heartedly. We are here to do things very professionally. We are very strict with our cleaning crew, with our handyman. Uh, we insist and demand perfection in pretty much everything that is done on our properties. We are very excited about the opportunity to bring in tourism and to enable tourism to come into Eureka. Eureka is a very special place, as you know. There's not many other places up and down California that you get to see as much character as you do along Main Street, or any other murals that are painted along the Old Town. Go to see the Bay, this is just an amazing place. Um, and there's so much opportunity here for people to come and have an experience that they can't get anywhere else. With COVID, hotels have been kind of leery for most people. Um, this is an opportunity, like I said, for them to come and do this. We are providing jobs for a lot of cleaners, a lot of staff. Neil, obviously, with watching security cameras and coordinating different things. We have handyman on call. We take care of issues, as soon as that it's brought, as soon as it's brought to our attention. We don't like for things to fall to the wayside or to be put on the back burner. If something occurs, it's our, it's our philosophy that we deal with it as soon as possible. Um, just like with painting on a house, if you know that a house needs painted, and you just wait a little bit, a little bit, do touch-ups, do touch-ups, all you're doing is more damage to the underneath in the long term. And that philosophy is kind of carried out throughout. We've heard from all of our employees and all the opportunities that they have had because of these jobs, and we would like to continue to provide that opportunity to more and more people. It is unfortunate that, you know, there's no fence line in between the two properties. Uh, but if, you know, if it's gonna be an issue, we have, you know, thought about putting up the fence as well, and if the neighbors have also been thinking about putting up the fence, it can be a motorized fence to help mitigate any, any issues that they may have, or the neighbor in the back may have. We don't want to step on any toes, but we also see this as an opportunity to help everyone, basically.
Maybe.
And there was, there was concerns mentioned, such as the garbage service. Um, but even in the photographs, that has already been addressed as a condition of the permit you guys mentioned. There is garbage cans viewable in the, or showing in the picture rather, that, uh, that Caitlin took. So we are addressing things as expeditiously as possible, as soon as it is brought to our attention. And as my partner Philip said, we are only a phone call away from anyone. We will be installing more security cameras than we already have. And we do have more technology on the way, such as the door locks. We have some already, we're going to get a lot more before anything actually happens. Um, and with these door locks, they provide the opportunity to make schedules to where even if you have the access code, the access code will not work after, or between certain hours. You can have up to a hundred different unique access codes. So every guest, or employee, or whatnot, anybody that has access to go in there, can be identified. And violators can be, uh, can be persecuted basically. As for Airbnb rules, we can give them bad reviews, bad ratings, and it can be remedied through those means.
Thank you very much Ms. Adams for your words tonight, and, you know, giving us some clarity on everything, we appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
So if there's no more, uh, public comment, we'd like to close that and bring that back in. Uh, commissioners? Is there anything else that you'd like to discuss or have any questions thus far?
It's currently being rented and confused, it's currently on Airbnb without a permit, is that what I'm trying to understand?
That's correct, as far as we understand it, yes.
There are long-term guests in there.
May I speak?
Is this Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yeah, um, Meredith, would you like to ask your question, Mr. Johnson, directly for clarity?
Yeah, I just, the, it's, I don't know if you've seen the emails that we received today, is that part of the record that they would have access to? There's some pretty hefty accusations from your neighbors, so I'm just trying to figure out what exactly is going on there now, but I guess our job is really to under, to make a determination if it's within code, right? I, we're not here to, yeah.
And, yeah. Yeah, unfortunately.
Deal with the neighbor relations. I think Philip and David, you guys have some work cut out for you with that situation, but um, I don't understand that that's our purview here, correct Yana?
Correct Commissioner Mayor, we're here just to see if this plan fits, you know, our plan and its code, you know, and, and congruent with all of that. And, you know, I, I would like to say though, and echo that, you know, this is a very community-based place, and wherever there's frictions in communities, you know, like that's not our purview, but we do have to coexist, and, you know, working it out with neighbors is paramount, you know, to the success of our community, so. But it is not our purview, so we are just here to see if this plan is consistent with everything, and making sure that we follow- And making sure that we follow those codes. So, I, staff, I have a question, you know, just regarding like fencing in between, in between properties such as this. There, to my understanding, there is no requirement for if you were renting a place versus just having like a transient habitation or, you know, like a BBRO or Airbnb to have privacy fencing or anything like that, right? There's no text or regulations or adoptions like that.
There is not in residential zone districts or specifically for having vacation rentals. But there are requirements if somebody wanted to install a fence.
Right, correct. Okay. That was the only question I had.
I have another question. Do you have, I'm assuming Caitlin has read that whatever easement is associated with that road. Like you said, I drove by there today, so I kind of like, I, I saw what the issues would be. Does that house at the end of the road have access on Cherry? Or is that their only ingress and egress into their property?
That is their only ingress, egress. And I mean, I could pull up the, one of the site plans that I had on there. But it, it looks like the road, there is, there is enough space for David and Philip to enter the garage without going onto the neighbor's property. And you would have to back up though. So if they do the three-point turn coming in and out of there, it does encroach on the neighbor's property. We did inquire about an access easement and there was none found. So it seems to be a prescriptive easement right now where they, you know, people have been using it that way. And so that's also why the, in addition, the carport in the back can't be used because you definitely have to cross over the property line to access it. So that's what we need.
So I also had a question too about just adding on to the, to the, the maximum cap of like allowing, you know, events there. So if this is a small space and there's already, you know, some parking issues, like what was, what was the reason to, you know, have another? I'm sorry, my words are escaping me, it's been a long day. What was the reason for that to add events then to this space? I'm just kinda wanting clarity on that whole process and context.
So originally, the applicant had proposed not to do any events. And they, because of that, they were allowed to have additional guests on the site. But when they asked to make changes and to allow events, then that triggered the requirement for the building official to make a determination as to the number of occupants and guests that could be there for an event.
Thank you for that. And then, that's the other aspect I'm unclear on, just what signals an event for something like this? I mean, it seems like it's just pretty much up to the people renting the space, you know? And I just don't even understand how that's regulated within the city. And that's just a curiosity question for me to staff. Like with vacation rentals and this becoming more and more popular, like how is that even tracked or regulated?
So they are examples listed in the code of events for vacation rentals are wedding receptions or weddings, graduation parties and those types of things. So it would be any, any of, any gathering that consisted of more than just the occupants of the vacation rental.
And to be clear Kristen, we don't track that, the city doesn't track that. The applicants aren't required to submit to us when they're having their six events.
Not in the inland portion of the city, they are not.
Okay.
I had one additional question as well, if I can ask it. I understand that there are security cameras and ways to know if there is an issue on site. But I would like the applicants to clarify, once they know there's an issue on site, a noise complaint or anything else, what is triggered? What kind of protocol is in place to deal with the issue? Are the people renting the space given a certain amount of time to vacate? Or are they just given a verbal warning? What's the process?
The protocol is progressive discipline. So first we'll message them, next we'll call them, next if, if we need to, our cameras are two-way, so we can actually talk through the cameras. And the next is calling law enforcement if it gets to that. We haven't had that issue yet, we haven't even had to talk through the two-way camera. We've had large bookings in Crescent City, even with the large bookings, we've had, we've surprised, even I would say, I'm honestly surprised that we haven't had issues even with the groups.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson for that. Any other questions from commissioners to staff, comments?
I think it's always unfortunate when you have angry neighbors, but I don't, I don't see any other conditions we might be able to add on to help mitigate that.
I, I, I hear Commissioner Mayor, I've been thinking myself, and unfortunately, it seems that everything in this project does meet with the guidelines within the plan and, you know, the zoning and whatnot. So, yeah, I just feel, you know, we have to work within our purview and do what's asked of us. I just wish there was more we could do here, so.
Yeah, I've been trying to think creatively as far as like if we could add some conditions, that might help. But I'm kind of at a loss, it seems like a lot of them have been already addressed.
Yeah.
It seems like too that could be considered by the commission could be to deny the request to use the garage as a game room. And also to require a fence be built by the applicants, which they've offered to do. So those are two things that could be discussed as conditions of the project.
Yeah, I'm worried about the fencing, like you said, when I drove out there today, I'm not too sure how you would build a fence. I think it would inhibit parking on that off-street and quite possibly cause more congestion on the public street parking. But I agree, maybe the game room might not be appropriate. But again, it's perfectly within their right to utilize the property how they see fit.
That's exactly right, you know? It's a slippery slope when you're trying to make changes and things like that based on personal property. And again, you know, I go back to like, yes, this, you know, is being proposed as a vacation rental. But even if someone was renting that home and using that home as a game room, there's, there's nothing you can do to prohibit that. You know, and, and I do agree, Commissioner Mayor, that fencing could make parking more problematic. And just complicate things a little bit further. So, yeah. And, and I think that is proactive thinking, you know? And, you know, for the applicants here, we're trying to look at this holistically. Again, you know, community first and, and being efficient and pragmatic about things. So, you know, we all want the success of Eureka. And I can speak for myself, like I believe in tourism and I think it's a good thing, you know? But just trying to ease the pains on everyone involved. But again, I'm, I'm feeling that staff did a good job reporting here. And I thank staff for that. I, I don't have any further comments on this though commissioners, so I leave that to you.
If you, can you put up that resolution again? I don't, it's not in the agenda packet, right? Am I missing it? Didn't go fair enough. Probably not gonna put it in presentation mode, so I don't have to scroll through the whole, whole thing, so you'll see.
Actually, Commissioner Mayor, on the first page of the staff report, the last row in the table at the top of the page above the figure.
Okay, oh, I see it, thank you, that's helpful. Yeah, I mean, I'll move this, but I'm gonna suggest Philip and Dave do some work with their neighbors. I hear adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the minor use permit for the vacation rental at 3405 Dole Beer Street.
Thank you. So it's hard for me to see everyone on the screen, Jessica, can we do a traditional roundhouse vote?
Yep, as soon as you tell me who seconded.
That was created.
Thank you, Dila. Okay, so Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Mayor?
Hi.
And Commissioner Ariaga?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you everyone. So yes, for the next agenda item, I would have to recuse myself from this item. And unfortunately, that leaves us without a quorum, staff, am I correct in that? And so it'll have to be tabled to the next available time.
That would be correct, yes, we can try and set up a special meeting for it. And you are discussing the bell variance, correct?
Uh, yes.
Thank you everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you everyone. If I could speak to that next item as the representative for the applicant, I don't think there's a need for a special meeting. If it can be continued to the, to your normal meeting next month, this is not super urgent for us.
So I think Mr. Craft is talking about the SC Zone metal shipping container text amendment, correct?
That's correct, did I get to the wrong one?
Commissioner Ariaga, are you recusing yourself from the bell variance?
No, correct, sorry, correction on that. I am recusing myself from item C on the agenda and not the bell variance, I apologize for jumping the gun.
Not a problem.
You might as well cut Michael loose.
I appreciate that, thank you for jumping the gun.
Sorry, Michael.
Alright. You guys did, did good work tonight, bye.
Thanks Michael, I'm sure the bells both just had heart attacks when you said that, so.
Yeah, no fire drill there, sorry guys.
Sorry about that.
So if you're ready to move on, Madam Vice Chair, we do have the bell variance modification on the agenda next. It involves both 1635 and 1623 G Street, G is in George. The parcel numbers are 005, 053, 007, and 006. And the project number is B as in Victor, 3181, and it's a modification. And Lisa Savage is gonna provide the staff report this evening.
Awesome, thank you staff.
Good evening commissioners.
Good evening Lisa.
I'm gonna pop up the presentation for you. Hopefully I'll. Can everybody see it?
Yes, we can. I can see it.
Okay, this evening, we're here for the bell variance modification, permit number, the original permit number is V31-81 and the applicant is Darren Bell. General location. And zooming in, this is the parking lot that we're gonna be discussing today. This is 1635 G Street, which is also called the Monroe House. And 1623 G Street, which is called the Old Hospital. So general plan designation, MBR, medium density residential. The zoning is R2 residential medium. And again, 1635 G Street is the Monroe House. It now contains a residence and an ADU and the parking lot in question. APN 005, 053, 007. 1623 G Street, which we're calling the Old Hospital, is an apartment building. And the APN is 005, 053, 007. So the applicant is requesting an amendment to a variance granted by the planning commission in 1982. The variance was requested by the previous owner of 1635 G Street to reduce the setback requirements on the multifamily residential lot to accommodate the relocation of the Monroe House to the property. The planning commission granted the variance, but added a condition of approval to provide six off-street parking spaces behind the Monroe House for the benefit of both the subject property and the property located to the north at 1625, 23 G Street, which is the Old Hospital. The applicant is proposing the removal of the condition that requires the parking spaces in order to unencumber the property for future sale, allow for landscaping of the area, and the possible construction of a garage. So now we're gonna just go through the reasons why the applicant is requesting to remove the condition of parking. The parking encumbrance creates an unfair burden on the future sale of either or both properties. 1623 G Street, the Old Hospital, was and still is legal non-conforming for off-street parking. The parking requirement did not mitigate any potential impacts from the setback reductions. There is, staff is unable to identify a nexus between the variance to reduce the setback requirements on one property and the condition of approval requiring six off-street parking spaces for a neighboring property. The financing for the project is conditioned on the renovation and sale of the Old Hospital within the next five years. And in fact, if the relocation of the structure was to happen today, based on the present code, the structure would meet all of the setback requirements and would not even require a variance. So the previous parking burden for the Monroe House, the Monroe House was a nine-bedroom boarding house. So they had nine bedrooms and they shared the common areas. And based on the code at the time, the variance was granted, utilizing the property in this way would have required one off-street parking space for each, each guest room and one for every two beds, whichever was greater. And assuming each room had one bed, there were nine spaces total required at that time. The Old Hospital, it had 10 dwelling units. And based on the 10 dwelling units would have required one off-street space for each unit plus one space for every two units, or a total of 15 spaces. So the to, total parking burden in the past was 24 spaces. Present-day parking burden, the Monroe House is now gonna be a single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit or ADU. The parking burden is one space required for the residence and no spaces for the ADU. And the owner has agreed to provide at least one space on the property. The Old Hospital is gonna be multifamily residential, five units. One space is required for each unit or five spaces total. So we've gone from 24 spaces down to five. Um, the, the property is still legally non-conforming for the Old Hospital. The lack of off-street parking is not required to be met as a non-conforming site feature. It still retains the legal non-conforming status. It still retains the legal non-conforming status. And so the property can be rehabilitated without any off-street parking being required. The neighbors are in support of the project. Conditions of approval. There is one condition of approval. Inadvertent discovery protocol, which was required by the local tribes. And I just wanted to say that along with all the letters that were in the staff report attached, we received four more in support of the project. Staff recommendation. Hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to conditionally approve an amendment to a variance to remove the condition to provide six off-street parking spaces. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, and I don't mean to cut anybody off. It's just hard to see on these little screens, so. Sounds like a really interesting project, though. All of it.
Instead of the prior one.
Definitely. It seems like there's some improvements there, so that's great. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I have one comment. It's not a question for staff, but I just wanted to be transparent about the fact that I have met the bells. We've discussed the site, and I encourage them to come to the Planning Commission to hear from the neighbors. I'm very excited to see this here tonight, but when I discussed it with them, I was not a planning commissioner. I made no indication of any way I would vote. I discussed it with Kristen, and she said, based on the facts I provided, it would not be a conflict of interest to deliberate and vote on this project.
Thank you for that. Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. I appreciate it. And it's refreshing. So let the record note, and if we don't have any other questions or comments for staff, are the applicants here, were they wanting to speak?
The applicants are with us, both Darren and Jules Bell, and I do have one member of the public who I can call whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, Darren and Jules, if you would like to say something, now's the time. We'd love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. I'm Darren Bell. Thank you to Lisa and Kristen and everybody for your very thorough staff report. This is, situation has been weighing on our minds for a long time. And we have been very careful about how we've approached this. And we do have absolutely wonderful neighborhood support. And as they have been able to see the transformation over the last year or so, having this parking lot closed off has made such a difference to the quietness of the neighborhood and minimizing the constant need for law enforcement and crime in the area is being reduced. And really, the most important thing, I think, is the fact that the Monroe House, which is architecturally significant in Eureka, no longer having to bear the burden of having its backyard used as a parking lot. So the backyard of the Monroe House will now become, as any other backyard for a citizen of Eureka, enjoyed with landscaping, possibly a garage. And this, I think, is one of the most important things to help preserve this beautiful piece of architecture. And so thank you for working on this. And then this allows also for things to move ahead with the Old Hospital, which has great potential for restoration as well. And we're just pleased and grateful to the city for taking a careful look at this on how to move forward in an appropriate way. So thanks very much.
Thank you. So no other comment from the applicants, then let's go ahead and open it up to public comment.
All right, I will get our speaker on the phone. Hold on just one moment.
So I have Ron Cannell on the phone. Go ahead, Ron. Three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ron Cannell. I own the properties across the street from this project. And I've lived there for 22 years. I just wanted to say first time, please, please support the project. It's an absolutely fantastic thing what the bells have done for the neighborhood. And I'm deeply pretty full of that. But also I wanted to mention that parking, there's never really been a serious problem there, even over the last 22 years, even when there was a lot of impact. And I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with anybody potentially parking there. I've been over 250 feet of curb sitting in front of a lawn. So if anybody did park over there, which they did in the past, it didn't impact me then, it won't impact me now, so. Long and short of it is, parking is not a problem. And so I'm fully supportive of this project. I'd encourage you to approve it.
Thank you very much, Ron, for speaking out tonight. We appreciate the public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
You as well. And that's it for public comment. No one else in the queue?
Correct. No one else in the queue.
All right, bringing it back to the Commissioners. Any questions, comments, concerns, anything that you guys, you ladies want to discuss?
I personally feel like this is a pretty straightforward request. I'm really thrilled that they have pulled this together. I think that the staff report is totally on point that the condition of the original project had no nexus to the actual impact. So it's totally appropriate to revisit that. They are reducing the number of units on the two sites, so even if parking was an issue, it'll be less of an issue now than it was previously. And the sites are legal non-conforming in addition to that, so they're doing a lot of great work on the site. And I hope we can have this approved.
Staff, is there any way you can pull the resolution up?
I have it here.
Okay, great.
I move the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution to approve an amendment to a variance to remove the condition to provide six off-street parking spaces.
I will second. And then, just because I'm having technical difficulties on my side, Jessica, can you give us another call-out vote?
I sure can. Commissioner Freitas.
Hi.
Commissioner Mayor.
Hi.
And Commissioner Ariaga.
Hi.
Thank you, Motion carries.
I just want to say, good luck to the bells. It seems like you're doing a lot of good work out there, and we need more projects like that that impact Eureka in such great ways. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as we discussed, item C will be moved to the next commission meeting, correct? Next month's?
Yes, we will renotice it for that meeting.
Okay, great. And again, just, you know, if it's just the three of us for next month, I hope it's not, but if it just is, you know, I will have to recuse myself from that.
Sure. Commissioner Benson believes that he'll be in attendance at the meeting next month, so.
Okay, great, great. Moving on into business, there's no old business. Am I correct in that?
You are correct.
Okay, and then moving on to new business.
So before you this evening is the coastal CS height increase. It's a local coastal program amendment. It's applicable in the coastal zone. It affects various assessor parcel numbers. The project numbers are TA-19-0007 and LCP-19-0003. And Lisa is going to give us our staff reports this evening.
I don't think it, did it come up?
Nope.
Okay, one more time. Nope. Hold on.
We're not going anywhere. Don't worry. It's okay.
I don't know why it's not working.
Lisa, do you have two screens?
Yes, and it always forms me there I want. Right now, I think. Oh, I did, I missed it. So share screen. The one. And then start. Okay. Thank you, Kristen. So again, text the local postal program amendment, LCP 190003, PA 190007. The original applicant, the applicant is John Pollard. So the project description. We originally brought this to the Planning Commission for approval on November 13th, 2019. And on January 21st, 2020, the City Council approved the amendment to implement, to the implementation plan portion of the local coastal program to increase the building height from 35 feet to 55 feet. The amendment provided consistency with the inland service commercial zoning district's height limit established under the June 2019 inland coastal inland zoning code update. So the project area includes 320 parcels within the coastal CS zone. Those parcels include Eureka's downtown, Old Town area, East of Earl Avenue, Jacob Avenue, Harper Motors, a portion of the Indianola Cut Off, and a portion of the former Kmart building. And several strips along the west side of Broadway in Southern Eureka. This slide shows all of the CS zone districts. So on February 12th, 2020, 2021, the Coastal Commission certified the LCP amendment with a modification to the city's proposed amendment through the Certified IP Section 10-5.201. With a modification, whoops, sorry. The Coastal Commission is requiring the city retain the existing 35-foot height on CS zone properties in the coastal zone inland of Highway 101 and northeast of Eureka Slough, which would include the CS zone land at Jacob Avenue, Harper Motors, and a portion of the Indianola Cut Off. So in requiring the modification, the California Coastal Commission determined the implementation plan amendment, as submitted, did not conform with and was inadequate to carry out the provisions of the Certified Land Use Plan. Under the proposed amendment, only the height limit would change. All other existing development standards in the CS district would remain unchanged, including allowing the density. So as a result, the main land use plan consistency concern raised by the amendment was the protection of the visual resources. Most of the city's CS zone properties are within the city's relatively dense urban core and are set back from Humble Bay shoreline, where the height change would not impact coastal views or visual character. However, the Coastal Commission found that there were three pockets of CS zone properties. Those three pockets. Interspersed within vast open space areas ending adjoining the northeastern portion of the city, northeast of Eureka Slough and inland side of Highway 101, that afforded scenic views not only of the bay to the west, but also of the picturesque wetland sloughs, forests, hills, and coastal agricultural land inland of the high. The Coastal Commission found taller buildings would be very prominent, these low-propiled areas, which are likely developed with generally one or two-story buildings. Additionally, because the first, the flat topography, they also found there are locations along highway where the planted trees and vegetarian vegetation along roadside ditches and sloughs partially strains existing low-line commercial development through view. Taller buildings would be less effectively springy and could impact the scenic and visual quality of the coastal highway segment, which is inconsistent with the visual resources protection policies in the Certified Overtake. The Coastal Commission therefore adopted the amendment with the condition that the existing 35-foot building height limit on the CS zone lands along the inland side of Highway 101, northeast of Eureka Slough, and the northeastern portion of the city be reached. And those are the three portions that I just showed you. Staff recommendation, adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission recommending council approve modifications certified by the Coastal Commission. Any questions?
I have a question, and I don't know what the answer to this is actually. So I'm not entirely sure if I feel comfortable voting on this particular item or discussing it because I didn't realize part of this would be affecting a parcel of land that I work on, the old Kmart building. And it's considered it's in that zone, and technically I work for, you know, the owners who own that real estate and property and that this is all wrapped up in. And so staff, I'm not entirely sure if I should recuse myself from this as well.
So Commissioner Ariaga, are you, does your employer own any land on Jacob's Avenue near Harper Motors or Indianola?
No, just the old Kmart building, that parcel.
So those three areas that I mentioned are the only areas that are actually affected by this. The text amendment changing the height to 55 feet on the rest of the SC properties technically has already been approved by both the planning, sorry, by both the City Council and the Coastal Commission. It's just kind of still attached back with this. So action that you take would not impact the old Kmart building property.
Perfect. That's all I need to know then.
Staff would feel comfortable if you feel comfortable.
As long as I'm not breaking any rules, I'm good, so. Then that's great. Thank you, staff, for providing that clarity. um, then that's great. Thank you, staff, for providing that clarity. Uh, commission, did you have any other questions for staff or comment?
I think like Kristen said, this is already sort of a done deal. This is what we're getting. I don't see any reason to, um, have any issue with it. I think it's reasonable.
Great.
Should I just keep making motions here?
I, I think that's the theme of the night, Meredith.
I'm in the standing commission, adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the modifications to the LCP amendment to increase the building height limit from thirty-five feet to fifty-five feet within the coastal service commission, commercial zone districts as certified by the California Coastal Commission.
Thank you. I'll second.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Jessica.
Madam Vice Chair, we need to ask for public comment. It's not a hearing, but just comment.
Okay, I apologize, Meredith, on that. Um, is there any public comment?
And I don't see anybody raising their hand. And I have nobody who wa- wanted to speak on this item tonight.
So going once, going twice. All right. Thank you. So round two?
He already stated it. We just need a second.
I will second it. Commissioner Fuentes can second it. Let the record state.
Thank you. So we're ready to vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Mayor?
Hi.
And Commissioner Ariaga?
I.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, so as far as any new business, that was the only item, uh, for tonight. Moving down to reports and communications. So directors' reports and communications.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, um, the first item under directors' reports is the general plan annual progress report. A copy of the report, um, that was provided to council and was submitted to, um, the state of California was included in your agenda packet. And, um, I just have a verbal presentation for you this evening on this one. Um, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. So California Government Code Section six five four zero zero requires cities and counties to submit an annual progress report or an APR on the general plan and its implementation to the city council and the state of California by April first of each year. Apparently, other than the required annual reports regarding progress on the housing element implementation, the city has not submitted an annual progress report since the twenty forty general plan was adopted. Therefore, this report also incorporates data going back to October two thousand eighteen, when the twenty forty general plan was adopted and continues through December twenty twenty. So we have a total of thirty-five implementation programs that are listed in the general plan. Two of the programs have yet to be implemented, the vegetative maintenance plan for city-owned properties and reviewing the locations of grocery stores. Um, the remaining thirty-three programs are either ongoing or substantially, as in the case of implementation program M two or partially completed, as in the case of implementation plan M seven. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
I don't have any questions for staff. I think it was very clear in the report. Seems like the other commissioners don't have any questions or comments either.
So if you're ready, I will go ahead and move on to the housing element annual progress report.
Please do.
Okay. So this is the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty housing element annual progress report. And again, state housing element law requires the city to accommodate a share of total projected housing needs for Humboldt County for the planning period, which is also called a cycle. This share, uh, called the regional housing needs allocation or RENA is important because state law mandates that each jurisdiction provides sufficient land to accommodate a variety of housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. Compliance with this requirement is measured by the jurisdiction's ability to provide adequate land with adequate density and appropriate development standards to accommodate the RENA. The Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG, as the regional planning agency, is responsible for allocating the RENA to individual jurisdictions in the region. For the current housing element cycle six, which covers two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-seven, the jurisdictions within Humboldt County have been allocated a total of three thousand three hundred and ninety-two dwelling units. The total RENA allocation for the county is distributed across the four housing income levels, which include very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. HCOG then assigns the RENA to each incorporated city and the unincorporated portion of the county. Not shown on your screen there. And in case you're interested, um, this is a graph showing the percent of the total RENA allocated to each jurisdiction with unincorporated Humboldt County being first, City of Eureka second, Arcade third, Fortuna fourth, and the other jurisdictions following behind. The city of Eureka has been al- allocated arena of nine hundred and fifty-two units, and those are divided into the four income levels as follows. Two hundred and thirty-one very low-income units, one hundred and forty-seven low-income units, a hundred and seventy-two moderate income units, and four hundred and two above moderate income units. And for anyone who doesn't like pie, here is actually a bar graph that shows the same data. Finally, this graph shows the City of Eureka's RENA allocation in orange as compared to the overall countywide allocation in blue. And again, this is by income level. So Eureka's housing element divides sites available for development of housing into two categories. Housing development on non-site-specific parcels could be created through construction of accessory and/or junior accessory dwelling units, small lot and conservation subdivisions, and division or conversion of existing space. This type of development can take place on any lot, and the lots are not specifically identified in the housing element. The other type of site that is available for housing development is site-specific. These are sites that have been identified by parcel number in the housing element, and they are currently either vacant or non-vacant sites. These sites include the housing on publicly owned lots, but there has been no development on any of these sites as of yet. For each of the eight years of the housing element, the goal is to create twenty units for each type of non-site-specific development, either ADUs, subdivisions, or in existing spaces, with the ultimate goal being to create a total of four hundred and eighty dwelling units on non-site-specific parcels by twenty twenty-seven. During the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty period, a total of twelve accessory dwelling unit building permits were issued on non-site-specific parcels, but no building permits were issued for parcels that have been subdivided or converted. If we assign those non-site-specific targets for the entire period covered by the housing element to an income level, we are hoping to achieve a hundred and sixty accessory dwelling units, a hundred and thirty-four small lot or conservation subdivision units, a hundred and forty divisions or, uh, conversions of existing space units. And then for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty period, um, we issued building permits for a total of twelve ADUs in several income levels. However, there were no small lot or conservation subdivisions, and there were no building permits for the conversion or division of existing space. The annual progress report also asks how many dwelling units have been, have received all the reviews that are necessary to be able to approve a building permit application. And in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we approved design review for the Providence Supportive Housing Project, which proposed a total of forty-nine units, forty-eight of which will be very low-income units and one above moderate manager's unit. So altogether, including the ADUs we've previously discussed, the City of Eureka issued building permits for a total of nineteen dwelling units in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. But if we look at the number of dwelling units that have actually received certificates of occupancy in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, meaning from a building and zoning standpoint, they're ready to be occupied, a total of ninety-two new dwelling units were created with fifty low-income units, fifteen moderate income units, and twenty-seven above moderate income units. And finally, if we take those ninety-two units that were created and ready for occupancy and break them out by income levels and then compare them to the total RENA goal for each income level between now and twenty twenty-seven, we still need to develop two hundred and thirty-one very low-income units, ninety-seven low-income units, one hundred and fifty-seven moderate income units, and three hundred and seventy-five above moderate income units with an overall total of eight hundred and sixty dwelling units remaining. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
I just have a comment. It seems like there's a few, a few places to go.
I would wholeheartedly agree with you.
Well, hopefully with, um, some of the changes and, you know, um, I've been hearing that it's a lot easier to get building permits through and that process is smoother and easier. So hopefully, you know, that helps inspire um, a lot more ADUs and just a lot of the housing that we desperately need here in Eureka. So uh, commissioners, questions or comments for staff?
So I did have one other item if we are done with that one.
Oh. Let's go for it. Add it on.
Sliding it in. So I just wanted to let you know, um, please mark your calendars for April twenty ninth. From six PM to seven PM, uh, Link Housing will be doing a community meeting. Um, we will be talking about transportation and infrastructure in that meeting. Once the, um, invitations are ready to be sent out, they will be sent to planning commission members, and I would, um, encourage you to attend so that you can hear what's going on. And if you care.
Is that a Zoom meeting or in-person?
It's, um, it's online. It's not a Zoom meeting, but it is online. So unfortunately, we can't do in-person meetings yet. Hopefully soon. Um, anyway, that's all I had for you this evening under directors' reports.
Uh, thank you, Kristen. And, uh, there are no other reports in communications, correct?
Correct.
Well, uh, the last item on the agenda is adjournment unless anyone has anything else to say or would not like to go home tonight.
One really quick thing, I have a request, um, a question or a request. If the, um, annual goal setting of the council is completed, could we receive that in a future packet? It would be interesting to see what they decided was going to be the priorities for this year.
So I know that they are done with their meetings. I'm not sure if they're done with getting everything in writing yet, but I will certainly check with the city manager. And as soon as it is available, I will get that on the agenda for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that because that is the freshest policy in a sense. So, thank you.
Very, very true. I cannot agree more with that. So unless anyone has any, um, objections to this, um, I guess our meeting is adjourned for tonight. So thank you all for your time. A little bit interesting the way to start everything off. Uh, I imagine it'll be a little smoother next time. So fingers crossed. Thank you. Yeah, that was fun.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening, everyone, and welcome to the commission. Good night.
I welcome you all.